West Municipal Conference Gala.
Good evening, City Council, knowing that Mayor Tac is absent this evening. Kind of a motion to appoint Alderman Goshgarian as Mayor Pro Tem for the evening.
So moved.
Second.
Second, call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Mayor Pro Tem, floor is yours.
Okay. Welcome to the Monday, June 3rd, 2024 session of the Lake Forest City Council. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Certainly, Mayor Pro Tem, Eric Goshgarian.
Here.
Alderman Novit.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons.
Here.
Alderman Notes.
Here.
Alderman Powers.
Here.
Alderman Levert.
Here.
Alderman Weller.
Here.
Alderman Walder.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem, you have a forum.
Wonderful. Will you please join me and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you, everybody. As a city clerk stated, Mayor Tac is not available, so I'm just stepping in for this one and one only meeting. First off, on the agenda, comments by the mayor. Normally Randy would offer these up, but I thought I'd cobble together a few that I think are noteworthy. First off, I want to acknowledge and congratulate Lake Forest High School's school, uh, Lake Forest High School Boys Lacrosse Team for winning the state championship. So it's really quite an accomplishment. They talk about Scout Nation and they've made us proud. Secondly, noteworthy, this is a month of graduations, so I think Lake Forest High School graduates on June 8th. LFA graduated on the 1st, Woodlands Academy graduates on June 5th. All of our grade schools, Deer Path, St. Mary's, Country Day, and of course, Lake Forest College did their commencement last month. So congratulations to all graduates. Be careful, it's a fun summer. We want to make sure that all of our kids are safe. They're, they're the most important treasure in this community, so please be mindful and be safe throughout the summer. Third thing I just want to mention is coming up on Friday, June 7th, it's Meet the Fleet out at the Public Works Building. So out at the public, I'm sorry, Municipal Services Building. It starts from at 10 o'clock and it goes from 10 to 2:00, and it's a great opportunity for all of our residents, predominantly kids, get to go out there and see all the fun stuff that the, that the Public Works Department has and all of the neat stuff, the trucks and, and what they do. So I encourage all those who are interested to attend. And then lastly, the thing I did want to mention is the responsiveness of not only city council but city staff. When I joined city council five and a half years ago, probably the most significant issue that most residents had concerns and/or complaints about were the stormwater, stormwater issues. We had flooding over a great portion of town as we've had some weather changes, weather pattern changes occurring. We're getting more intense storms. It's creating issues with the stormwater runoff and it's become an inconvenience and indeed, at that point in danger, with various streets closing. And I think it's noteworthy, well, just by example, last week we had almost five inches of rain. And the city council and city staff has gone to great efforts over the last five years to address those stormwater issues. You know, recent stormwater projects include West Fork Farm Hackberry and Bowling Green, which the city invested 1.4 million on. The Old Elm Timber Forest Hill, which the city invested 1.65 million on. The Burr Oak Project, which was 4.8 million. The Pond Subdivision, 130,000. The Deer Path Route 41, the IDOT-funded 13 million dollar project. And Awani Road, which is scheduled to begin this year, 4.5 million. It's an aggregate, including Awani, of over $25 million of stormwater management enhancement that the city has done. And I think it's increased the quality of life for the residents. The number of calls that we're receiving at the city have greatly diminished. They're mostly from covered intakes on the street. And I think that all departments have pulled together and addressed those significant stormwater issues together collectively. Not to be left out, we had recent ravine projects that the city has also invested in, which is a real big improvement. We had the Rosemary Ravine Project, 560,000. The Walden Ravine Project, over a million dollars. The Rockefeller McCormick Ravine Project, 750,000. And then the Seminary Ravine Project, which we're waiting for the final grant from the USCPA for 1.6 million. So for a grand total of just under $4 million. So I think this demonstrates the city's commitment to those issues and our responsiveness to the residents. And I appreciate everybody's patience, but given the appropriate time and planning that the city of Lake Forest does, we do it the right way. And I think it's noticed by our most recent survey where stormwater management runoff is no longer the top priority. And so consequently, I think that this council and previous councils have done a great job in terms of addressing those issues. So thank you, everybody. And lastly, the one thing that I didn't mention was we invested $16 million over at Deer Path Park. And what was amazing is within 24 hours, the kids were back out on that park playing. And in years past, it would have been at least a week of cancellation for all of their activities. And I know there was some controversy in terms of the environmental sustainability component, but it seemed to be something that the residents wanted to do. And this is proof in the pudding, we've had five inches of rain in one week and the kids are out there the very next day playing. So again, I want to thank previous councils for their action there. Moving on, those are really the extent of my comments. What I do want to do though is introduce Marcy Kerr, who's the Executive Director for the Lake Forest Preservation Foundation and doing her annual preservation awards. And Marcy, if you would indulge me, I have a few things I want to say.
Sure.
Lake Forest, the City of Lake Forest Preservation Foundation has an important part in the Lake Forest community and has done so since the mid 1970s. The foundation is comprised of our friends and neighbors who are committed to promoting and raising awareness about the important historic buildings and landscapes that make Lake Forest special and distinguish our community from the many others around us. We're also fortunate in our community to have residents who see the value in investing in their historic properties. Annually, the foundation recognizes property owners who have demonstrated extraordinary efforts to restore, update, and preserve the historic structures of their properties. I know I speak for the entire city council in expressing my appreciation for the foundation, for the significant time and effort that goes into seeking out and studying these various projects completed in the historic district and locally landmarked properties each year. The foundation's award program, in addition to recognizing property owners and the architects, remind us of all of the architectural treasures that are in our community. It's easy for us to take special buildings located throughout our community for granted, but thank you for reminding us of what a special community we live in. And thank you to all the award winners and their architects for the care and expertise demonstrated in these projects. Marcy?
Thank you, Alderman Goshgarian. You like just said my whole interview. Beautiful research, we really appreciate it. So Kathy told me I'm on a little bit of a, oops, I think I just did the wrong thing. A little bit of a time limit, so, um, welcome. Good evening, council members and city staff, and thank you for inviting us to be here tonight. Since 1991, we have been highlighting and honoring these major customers of rich and privileged communities during the, so wide variety of properties, large and small, landscapes, newsletters, and websites.
Okay, thank you. Okay, much better. This year, we have awarded 10 wonderful properties in four categories, four of the six categories. And as I said, I'm going to zip quickly through these because Kathy told me I had 10 minutes. And so if I start talking really fast, you know, we actually are going to feature these in our summer newsletter, which will be out at the end of the month, and also they're online. The first category is preservation, and this is defined as maintaining the historical integrity and character of a structure or landscape through conservation, maintenance, and repair. The first property is 570 Crabtree Lane, and this was originally part of the 1890s Crabtree Farm of Mr. and Mrs. Scott Duran. In 1905, the dairy farm outgrew the location and moved north to Lake Bluff. The original buildings were by William Zimmerman, who a few years later became the state architect. By the 1920s, they were converted to a boys' school, Thorpe Academy. The former stable and now garage survives from the 1890s along with a small studio-like building. Between these structures, but not part of this award, is a 1982 Ike Colburn early postmodern home, which was built around the old silo, preserving the silo on the property. The second award under preservation is 901 North Church Street. This 1923 Colonial Revival Residence was built for Thomas and Barbara Cowles. The house was designed by Barbara's father, Alfred Hoyt Granger. Later, an east wind addition, wing addition, and several renovation projects were completed by Stanley Anderson. Notable features on the grounds include the 18th century Georgian Chippendale revival-style fence in the front and in the rear, this cute preserved playhouse. The playhouse was moved here from mid-century, moved here mid-century from the Charlie Clark family from the Ezra Warner Jr. Estate on Washington Road. The 1908 Frost and Granger-designed house on the site was demolished in 2018, though this Frost and Granger-designed playhouse survives. It was built for the Warner daughters, the future Jane Warner Dick and Marion Warner Hodgkins, both community leaders in the mid 20th century. Architect Charles Frost, after study at MIT, had worked for Peabody and Sterns in Boston when they designed the first Newport Breakers in 1878, though it burned in 1892. The Breakers 1878 Playhouse is copied here in similar character, though reduced in size. The current owner at 901 has maintained this link both to the earlier Warner estate on Washington Road and to the 1878 playhouse in Newport. The next is a Heritage Ward, which is for an older historic building that has changed character over its long history, but still maintains its integrity. An example would be such as the Presbyterian Church. 109 North Sheraton, this 4,500 square foot home dated by newspapers in the war, in the war, was built as early as 1876, probably as part of the post-Chicago fire wave of new residents. It was modified in 1886 and then in 1912 with a major estate era upgrade for Leeds and Dorothy Mitchell, working with architects Brown and Walcott. Chester Walcott, later based in Lake Forest, was a Princeton grad who studied in Paris and Italy. The Georgian east facade and sunken formal garden reflect the high quality, I'm sorry, high point of Boart's estate, house, and arts and craft garden designs on the North Shore. The next five wards are, were awarded under rehabilitation, and that's defined as continuing the use of a historic structure through repair, alterations, and additions while protecting its historical, cultural, architectural character, and this includes adaptive reuse. This 1912 lakefront bluff top house at 1345 Lake Road was built for the Donald McLennans by Howard Van Doren Shaw. The Prairie Renaissance style features prominent, predominant Italianate arches. The house survived seven decades of blustery lakeshore weather, economic depression, war, and high taxes, but by the 1980s needed replays, pairs. At that time, the property was subdivided and rehabilitated by New York, new classical designer, David Anthony Easton of New York. The tall windows north of the entry were added by Easton, giving a more pronounced Italianate character for the house, though originally its Scottish name had been Sternaway. And here's an interesting photograph, group of photographs. The 2003 restoration by Northworks to the, to the far right has swept away many of Easton's Italianate details, which Easton's property is in their, or details are in the middle, and given the lake facade stronger materials against the wind and dampness. And then the first on the left is the original, some original pictures. Next is 237 Onwensia. This stately home is well-known around town for the view from the view across the city, or the Country Day School playing field towards its formal courtyard with pollard row of trees. Built in 1939 for James Ramsey Minor, its architects were Edwin Hill Clark and Chester Walcott. Clark, the architect of the Lake Forest Library, and Walcott, the architect of 190 North Sheraton shown earlier. The classic residence and its courtyard exhibit a French demeanor, a reflection of Walcott's Paris training. The respectful new owners, Shannon and Julian England, recently, after many decades of deferred maintenance, have rehabilitated the house's exterior. They have also added a north side attached to garage set well back west of the main facade along the entry drive off Onwensia Road. And the rehab architect on this project was John Berta. This new formalist and international-style residence at 877 Woodbine Place was designed by George Scott Hodgkins. He was a graduate of Yale University and Yale Architectural School. He started his own firm in Chicago, but then died suddenly at age 32. He was the stepson of Mimi Warner Hodgkins, after whom with her sister, the little playhouse at 901 Church was built in 1908. It's so interesting this year, there's so many connections between the houses. The current owner, Mary Lunane Lucas, designed and contracted for the 2020, 2023 addition and garden. The images shown on the left was the recent major east addition. On the center is the 1965 original west entrance facade, which has been preserved, and the right, the new formal gardens in the rear. 425 North Sheraton, this English arts and crafts gates, gateposts, adjacent walls, and gatehouse for the 1915 Robert Thorn Estate has been rehabilitated with a commendable restraint by the current owners. The main house was demolished after Thorn's death in 1955 and the property was subdivided. These structures are only, are the only surviving elements in the original, in original condition. John McInney of Kansas City, Missouri, designed the original house. McInney was an architect for over 120 buildings, many of which are now in the National Register of Historic Places. His associate architect, Nelson Max Dunning, who specialized in large-scale commercial and educational buildings, supervised the construction of the gates, gateposts, walls, and cottage. The dome for the Lake Forest Library was designed by architect Edwin Hill Clark in 1931 and is shown on the left in a mid-century photo. The library dome stands out as a distinctive roof element and was represented, repaired, and restored by Louise Jennings and Altner and Associates after being tarred for several years. Installation of copper panels, decorative elements, and new inlay gutter systems were completed in 2023. The project corrected a serious moisture problem and allowed for subsequent restoration of the 12 significant murals inside the rotunda by Nikola Reminov. The architecture and engineering firm has also worked with the Preservation Foundation on Walden's Bluff Edge Bridge in 1990s and the Market Square Fountain. This slide offers two views of the completed dome. On the left is a great viewpoint from the south, and then on the right is an interesting aerial view that shows the crucified form plan of the Shedd sisters' donated building, similar to that at the 1920s Shedd Aquarium in Chicago. And also interesting are the encroaching taller three-story Phase 1 and Phase 2 of the recent McKinley Road condominium complex. Our last category is infill. This year, two infill awards have been given for new houses that reflect earlier waves of modernism, revived for the 21st century. They key off the styles nearby in their historic neighborhoods. The first of these two are at 61 Sequoia Court and is found not far from the Ike Colburn-like early postmodernist house across the adjacent Onwensia Road. It's also comparable to the historic Romo's House by Colburn on Lake Road with its traditional roof forms. The house sits apart from its immediate neighbors in a mature landscape content. This Northworks design represents a revival of the new formalist style of the first years after the mid-century modern houses. It employs international style, which induced plate, which induced plate glass floor-to-ceiling windows and wide chimneys as promoted mid-century by Frank Leidright and others. Here, the fenestration is framed in context of traditional forms and materials, gabled roofs, shed dormer, and stonework. And our last award is this 2017 house by Chicago architect Eric Johnson at 810 Barberry Lane. It is infill, one block just west of Lake Road and of the architect Ralph Millman's 1939 Sterling Morton A.B. Dick Jr. Conservative Modernist House at 975 Lake. The Barberry House recalls the 1920s and 30s Art Deco era forms and symmetrical ideas as in the Morton House. The warm off-white or cream wall color contrasts with the polished dark stone of the entry drive and motor court. And the use of the reflection in the art, in the Art Deco gardens started in Paris and the Riviera in the 1910s and 20s and was pioneered by Vera Brothers and also inspired a 1915 Adler Garden for Mrs. Morris Ely in Lake Bluff. And that's it. And in closing, I'd like to thank the council for its continued support of preservation and conservation of our incredible community. The foundation looks forward to providing ideas and direction as you look ahead, especially in the overall vision for the central business district. It's always a pleasure to work with you and we so appreciate your time devoted to our community. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Marcy. Marcy, don't go anywhere. I was wondering if any of my colleagues had any questions or comments? Nancy, Alderman Novit?
I want to thank Marcy for the work she has been doing for how many years?
Seventeen.
Seventeen years Marcy's retiring from the Preservation Foundation this summer.
Thank you. I know, I wasn't going to say anything, but thank you.
How do we not acknowledge that? I mean, it's phenomenal, the amount of, the amount of information you've brought to light. And thank you for leading the group so diligently and so effectively all these years.
It's been a wonderful job, it's a wonderful community. I, I feel so lucky to be involved in all the things that have really been preserved and the education that we have helped in the community, so thank you.
Wonderful, thank you so much.
Thank you.
So moving on, we go on to the next agenda item. We have comments by the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and members of city council. Good evening, it's a bit of a tough act to follow, but pleased to introduce our second group of guests here this evening. I think as everyone knows, there's a lot of activity going on right now at the Lake Forest Northwestern Hospital campus. The work that's happening represents an enormous, really additional investment in, to the community by the largest employer in the city. And so here to provide an update on the activity happening with the development on the campus, I'm pleased to welcome and introduce Seamus Collins, the new president of Lake Forest Hospital, as well as Dr. Jeffrey Copin, the Senior Vice President and Chief Medical Officer. And as they're coming up to the podium, I just want to say on behalf of the city and certainly staff, how pleased we are with Seamus's recent promotion. He's been a wonderful partner to work with over the years and we look forward to his leadership in the future. So with that, turn it over to you.
Thank you, Jason, thank you for the kind words. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, Goshgarian, thank you to the members of the council. I think we're, we're very excited for the opportunity to, to join you today as part of the community spotlight and, and speak about all of the wonderful things that are happening on the campus of Lake Forest Hospital. I'm joined today by my colleague, Dr. Jeffrey Copin. Dr. Copin is the Chief Medical Officer of Lake Forest Hospital, and he and I are, again, very excited to talk about not only the visible aspects that you can see going on on campus, but also the building of new clinical services and bringing the new clinical services to the community as well. You know, tonight, we have three things really that we'd like to share with you. You know, first and foremost is just more information about the wonderful, high-quality care that Lake Forest Hospital and our doctors and nurses are bringing to this community. We'd also like to use this as an opportunity for us to share a little bit of an update on the construction activity that's happening on campus, but more importantly, how that's going to lead to improvements in access and improvements in the clinical care that we're bringing to this community that otherwise is typically available only in large academic centers like our sister hospital in downtown Chicago. And then lastly, we want to share how our pursuit of these goals is really consistent with the master plan that was set in place and approved in 2012. And that this is all possible because of the foresight of city leadership at the time to really partner with Lake Forest Hospital in meeting the growing needs, the growing healthcare needs of this community. And of all the accomplishments of, of Lake Forest Hospital and Northwestern Medicine in this community, I think the ones that we are most proud of is our record in clinical quality over the past few years. And I think ones that are worth calling out in particular are that Lake Forest Hospital is currently ranked number 10 in Illinois and 10 in the Chicagoland area of all hospitals in Illinois. And perhaps more impressive than that is that our hospital is home to three nationally-ranked subspecialties in neurology and neurosurgery, geriatrics, and pulmonology, pulmonology and lung surgery. Additionally, we've recently been reinstated as an A by the Leap Frog Group that rates hospitals on their safety, and also have been awarded five stars by CMS. And these are important indicators that we follow as recognition and validation of the quality of services that Lake Forest Hospital is delivering to this community. And the quality and services, and this clinical quality really that our physicians and nurses are providing has really led to some wonderful growth that has needed us to expand our campus. The land use plan for Lake Forest Hospital, which was approved in 2012 and updated in 2016, excuse me, contemplated the development of our campus in three phases. The first phase, organize campus to support state-of-the-art medicine and the efficient delivery of healthcare, as well as designing our campus as a place for community engagement and community wellness. 65% of the campus will remain green space, and the general design principles have really allowed us to engage the community with the natural landscape of the campus. Phase two of the project focused on Phase two of the project focused on healing the campus and the removal of the original 1942 building, which led to a more logical design and easier wayfinding for the patients who make their way to our hospital. Additionally, we've recently gone live with a 900-car parking garage, which has allowed us to improve the experience of patients by opening up lots of space near the main entrance. In the last phase of the project, contemplated space for future growth on the campus, which, as many of you can see, we've begun executing on. Just six years ago, in the spring of 2018, Lake Forest opened a state-of-the-art replacement hospital. And in just under two years from now, we will be opening an expansion of the facility that will nearly double the capacity of the existing hospital. The expansion of the hospital is consistent with the architectural language of the existing facility and lays out an expansion to the east of our structure away from the residential neighborhoods along West Moreland and 41. In February of this year, the parking garage opened, which has led to a significant improvement in the patient experience by consolidating our employee parking into this one area. The expansion project currently underway, which includes two brand-new pavilions, will double the size of our inpatient capacity. It'll relocate the emergency department and expand the emergency department by 50%. It'll expand our critical care beds from 12 to 24, increasing the complexity and acuity of patients that we can care for. And it will provide incremental capacity for growth on our procedural platform that will allow us to bring higher complexity and acuity services to the community. And over the last few years, as the acute care needs of the community have increased, it has been difficult for Lake Forest Hospital and our existing footprint to deliver on the patient experience expectations that we have come to expect, particularly in our emergency department. And to get back to improving this experience, we'll be increasing the capacity and flexibility as to deal with surge volumes in the emergency department. We'll be expanding our triage and patient flow to start care at arrival, when patients arrive at the emergency department, so they don't have to experience waits before they receive care. And we'll enhance a large waiting room for those who do have to wait with lower acuity services, that they can do so in a comfortable environment. And before I hand this off to Dr. Copin, I want to make sure I've got the right slides here. You can see a south picture here, but what we wanted to share was that this work that we're doing is all aimed at making the services and returning to that community hospital feel that we have all come to appreciate at Lake Forest. This building project is to bring more specialized care, more specialists and expert care closer to home. We'll be adding more patient beds so that the experience inside the hospital is consistent with what we come to expect. And we're looking on making state-of-the-art medicine hospital feel part of the community. And so, Dr. Copin is here to speak a little bit about the specific clinical services that are happening
Thank you, Seamus. The promise of Northwestern Medicine coming up to the northern suburbs and to Lake Forest was to bring the very best medical care to this community, and I believe we have gone a long way to satisfy that goal. And what's even more exciting is where it is that we're going to be going. So I want to share some firsts that we have up in the suburbs, and now I'm talking about the metropolitan area of Chicago. The first comprehensive cancer center outside of the city of Chicago is actually here in Lake Forest. We also now have comprehensive cancer centers in Glenview and in Gray's Lake. To be a comprehensive cancer center, we need to fulfill a long list of obligations, and there's a national organization that provides this designation. This really is a big deal, and this has allowed us to begin doing clinical trials here in Lake Forest, the same clinical trials that we do downtown. People don't have to go downtown anymore for that. So somebody with a difficult cancer can be enrolled in a clinical trial here in Lake Forest. We have also embarked on the most cutting-edge immunotherapy that we're providing here. In the past, people would have to go downtown. We're very proud of our breast program. Our breast surgical oncology is about as good as it comes. Dr. Heidi Memmel and Dr. Denise Monahan are our two fellowship-trained breast surgeons. And then, what we've already created in Lake Forest is a nationally-acknowledged program in breast reconstruction, led by Dr. Michael Howard, ably assisted by our nurse practitioner Sylvia. We have patients now coming to Lake Forest from all over the country, women who've had mastectomies, and rather than having breast implants, they have this amazing procedure that Dr. Howard does where he uses a woman's own tissue to recreate a breast. It's an amazing, amazing procedure, and I'm proud to say we have the very best program in the entire Midwest here in Lake Forest. In cardiac imaging, we now have the most highly sophisticated technology available in Lake Forest for our community, things like three-dimensional transesophageal echocardiography. Don't ask for the details, it's pretty amazing. We do cardiac MRI, and we're doing the latest CT coronary angiography here, which is really extraordinary. Dr. Christina Anderson joined us a year ago. Dr. Anderson is a fellowship-trained structural heart cardiologist. She's able to repair an individual's heart valve without opening up the chest. It is really an amazing procedure, and it's about as cutting-edge as it gets. One program that we're extremely proud of is palliative medicine. People don't get as excited about palliative medicine as they do about neurosurgery, cardiac surgery, but if you really want to know about the heart and soul of a hospital, find out the quality of its palliative medicine program. Dr. Martha Twaddle, who's our medical director, is a nationally-known expert and leader in palliative medicine, and together with her colleagues, Martha has created a program at Lake Forest that you don't find in many hospitals, particularly in the community. We all know that we're all going to die. How is it that we're going to die? Martha and her team sees to it that our patients, members of our community, are helped to their death in the most dignified, comfortable way possible, and their families are cared for along the way. And finally, I can talk all day about the tertiary-level care that we can provide, the high technology, but at the end of the day, Lake Forest Hospital is the hospital for this community, and we need to fulfill the primary care needs of the community. And you should know, I'm a primary care doctor myself, this is not easy to do in the current environment, but we've been extremely fortunate to be able to recruit to this community some of the best primary care doctors that you're going to be able to find. Dr. Anyas, Dr. Sidon in internal medicine here in Lake Forest, Dr. Kraft, who was one of our own family medicine residents in family medicine, Carrie Colehop in family medicine. And then in obstetrics, we've been able recently to attract some of the most wonderful colleagues that I had downtown at Northwestern Memorial Hospital who want to practice here. So the quality of the obstetrical care that we provide at Lake Forest is every bit as good as it's ever been, and quite frankly, our expectation is it's going to get better and better as we continue to recruit physicians like Dr. Reynolds and Dr. Bryant. So if there's any questions, we're more than happy to take them. I just want to conclude by saying that Northwestern Medicine in Lake Forest is just an amazing partnership of the community here and Northwestern Medicine. It's been an extraordinary merger. One of the things that I love to tell my colleagues downtown is when we came up here, we were wondering what would happen with the culture, the academic medicine culture that we had downtown, together with this amazing, high-touch, community hospital culture of Lake Forest. And one of the things I'm most proud of is we took those two things, we put them together, we shook them up, and somehow we've gotten them to merge. So we have the very best of the old Lake Forest Hospital for our preservation lady, that's really important, and we've been able to take that together with the Northwestern Medicine-ness of who we are to create something, I really want you all to know, is unique within the Northwestern Medicine family, and it's something I hope this entire community can be very proud of, that Northwestern Medicine Lake Forest Hospital is here in Lake Forest, Illinois, and we thank you for your time.
Thank you. An example of, again, to use former Mayor Pendleance's phrase, one of the jewels in our community, and truly what's happening over at Lake Forest Hospital Northwestern Medicine, it's truly transformative, and we're deeply appreciative of all you're doing for our community and for the people who seek care here. And again, it's a wonderful thing to have a world-class facility in our own hometown, so thank you very much. And does anybody have any questions, comments? Dr. Powers, Alderman Powers.
Not a doctor, yes.
Not a doctor.
I've had the privilege of having, well, I go to the health club over there, so I'm there every single day driving through, and I've also had several procedures done in the last six months or so. The staff is incredibly friendly, the management of the construction was almost flawless. I mean, I can't recall a time that I was ever inconvenienced trying to get in or out, and how friendly everybody was. It's just a testament to what you guys have built and what we're continuing to try to provide from a generational perspective. So thank you for the care in which you've designed, built, and implemented the vision that was put forth, so thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? No? Thank you so much. Thank you for being with us tonight. All right. Next on the agenda is opportunity for citizens to address the city council.
Actually, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I should have jumped in. I actually have a couple brief updates that I wanted to provide to the council and the community regarding several big projects and initiatives that are underway, not quite as big as the hospital, mind you, but certainly large projects in our world. First, just a brief update on the exploration for a new police facility. As the council recalls, in mid-April, at your April 15 meeting, not only did the council take action to approve a purchase-and-sale agreement for the property at 1925 Field Court, but several contracts were awarded as well that allowed the staff and the city to proceed with due diligence on the building. And to provide just a brief update on where things stand with that, we have numerous studies and projects that are all occurring concurrently with one another and should be wrapping up in the next couple of weeks. First, the Concord Group was brought on to conduct the facility condition report. They're currently examining all of the building components, trying to better assess their current age, condition, remaining useful life, which in turn will help us understand sort of short, mid, and long-term financial obligations that may come with purchasing the building. We expect, I think in the next week or two, to get a draft of their report, which staff will then review in anticipation of presenting to the city council. Second, FGM Architects was brought on board to conduct the space needs assessment. Over the last month or so, they've done a lot of due diligence, meeting with pretty much every member and section of the police department, but also other departments as well, from community development, IT, public works, building maintenance, really with the goal of identifying sort of the types of uses and activities and spaces that'll be needed in the new building. And in trying to provide sort of a range of cost estimates for the council, we're breaking down their report in areas that we're calling critical to have, should have, and nice to have, and using that to, again, provide a range of cost estimates for the council that you'll consider in July. In addition to that, we're wrapping up the Phase One environmental study, some smaller internal work, but city staff has, our forestry department, has been surveying the property to develop potential landscaping plan that may be needed at the property. And then we're also working to identify potential operating costs and increases associated with operating and maintaining the building, so that when we come back to the city council, we're not only discussing the potential capital investment associated with building out a new police facility, but also ongoing operating costs that we may have to carry as well. So all of those reports should be wrapping up, again, in the next two weeks, with the goal of staff then reviewing them and preparing them for council presentation, beginning with the July 1 council workshop. At that meeting, we would anticipate reviewing all of the various reports with the city council that I just referenced, also engaging in a preliminary discussion on construction, financing options, and again, ongoing costs about the capital side and the operating side. Again, that'll be based on sort of the low and high-end range estimate costs provided by FGM. Actual financing of the project, where the council would consider proceeding with this, wouldn't come for another eight to 10 months down the road, but before the council takes action considering closing on the property, it's important to understand not just what the potential costs of the build-out will be, but what levers and mechanisms exist to finance those costs as well. And then, on July 15th, we'll come back to the city council. For the council, again, we'll do a final review based on any questions you've had from some of those reports, and at that time, the council will have to make a determination on whether to proceed with executing on the purchase-sale agreement and closing on the property, or to walk away. And if the council chooses at the July 15 meeting to proceed with acquiring the property, the next phase after that would be engaging in a more comprehensive schematic design to build out the space. That's probably another, you know, eight or nine-month process after that. So, any questions I can answer for the council on that project?
Questions, comments?
Okay. We'll see you next month on that one. And then next, no, thanks Dana. I wanted to provide a quick update on our strategic planning process as well. The council recalls having our facilitator here to help lead a council discussion back at our meeting in March. Since that time, we've had four community engagement sessions since the end of April. As a result of all of the feedback that was gathered through those community engagement sessions, we have an internal project team that's working right now to synthesize some of that community feedback, ensure alignment with some of the priorities addressed by the city council, and will ultimately advance sort of a draft of strategic plan priorities. Once that work's done internally, and I expect that to happen, you know, probably by the end of June, we'll look to solicit community feedback on draft priorities, likely utilizing community surveys to do that, and we'll take that feedback again to then come back for the first meeting in August to share the draft strategic plan with the city council to solicit your feedback, ensure it's in alignment with conversations you've had, to also allow the community and other opportunity to provide input. Based on the feedback we received from the council at that meeting in August, if we're close, then our anticipation would be coming back in September to present. close, then our anticipation would be coming back in September to present sort of the final draft and seek council approval. So any questions on strategic planning process? Okay, well, that's all to say, usually summers are quieter time of the year, but in this case, both July and August and September are going to be pretty busy for the council, but these are also exciting and transformative projects. So appreciate your patience, and more to come starting next month.
Great, thank you, Jason. Next on the agenda now is a time for the opportunity for citizens to address the city council, so if there's anybody present, please come forward and state your name and your address.
Hi, I'm Diane. I live in Lake Forest, and as I learned from the, from the recent Lake Forest 101 course, that I don't have to give some key information, so I'm going to play a little devil here and not give it out. Anyway, I just wanted to commend the city staff and everyone who helped with the course, and thank you for this time to, to share my, my input. It was an absolutely marvelous experience, and I think everyone enjoyed it, at least they appeared to, and I know a few people on the council were present. It was very well-run, and I very much appreciated their time and their exemplary information and help, so it was great. So a big thank you. And then the other one is, that's the second course I've taken in Lake Forest, and the first one was the Citizens Police Academy, which was equally wonderful. So if anybody hasn't taken either one, I strongly encourage them to do so. So thank you, that's it.
Thank you. Anyone else wants to address the city council? Seeing no others, next agenda item is committee reports, of which we have none, so that would move us on to items for omnibus consideration, of which there are eight. I would ask for the alderman to wait until I read all eight, and if they want any of those to be taken separately, please do so at the end. Starting out, item number one, approval of the May 20, 2024 city council minutes. Item number two, approval of the check register for the period of April 27 through May 24, 2024. Number three, approval to extend the city's office supplies contract with Warehouse Direct through May 31, 2025, as determined by the suburban purchasing cooperative of the Northwest Municipal Conference. Item number four, approval of recommendation from the Public Works Committee to award a three-year professional services agreement to EcoClean Maintenance to provide janitorial services at city facilities in the amount of $666,562. Item number five, award a three-year contract to Patriot Pavement Maintenance, Inc. for the crack ceiling project and authorize the city manager to execute an agreement in the amount not to exceed $35,000 per year. Item number six, approval of amendments to the February 5, 2024 Illinois Department of Transportation Resolution appropriating $266,487 in motor fuel tax funds and $752,516 in rebuild Illinois funds to be used for the 2024 annual pavement resurfacing program. Item number seven, approval of a resolution adopting the North Branch Chicago River and Lake Michigan watershed-based plans. And finally, number eight, award of proposal to Alpha Paint Works, Inc. for fire hydrant paint, painting services contract included in the FY 2025 through FY 2027 operating capital budget for the sum of $55,800. Do any aldermen wish for any of these to be pulled from the agenda and taken separately? No? No, hearing none? Can I get a motion to approve the eight omnibus items as presented?
So moved.
This is a roll call vote?
Certainly. Alderman Clemens?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Goshgarian?
Aye.
Alderman Levert?
Aye.
Alderman Weber?
Aye.
Alderman Walther?
Aye.
Eight yeas, and our motion carries.
Thank you, everybody. The next item on the agenda is old business, of which we have none. The next item is new business, of which we have none. I promised Mayor Tack I'd have this in less than an hour, and I'm going to fulfill my promise. Are there any additional items for discussion or comments by city council? None, way to go. All right, so that being said, there being no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn? Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Thank you very much, everybody.